All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. My name is Andrew Appleton. I'm District of Oak Bay Councilor. I am acting mayor for September, so I am chairing the meeting in place of Mayor Kevin Murdock, who is out of province today. So I am standing in his stead. We have a light agenda, so to minimize my ability to mess anything up. So before we begin, as usual, I would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional territory of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the Lakewongan-speaking people known today as the Songhees and the Squawin Malt Nations, and that their historic connections to these lands continue to this day. If you're a member of the public and you're going to come up and address the committee, please note that the meeting is being livestreamed, and video recordings of the meeting are archived on the municipal website, so your comments and your input will be recorded and archived on the municipal website. So let's move on right to item one on the agenda, which is the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission minutes. So I will invite Mr. Herman to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief summary of the meeting. The Castaway Wanderers Rugby Club came forward with the application to hold a beer garden outside at Windsor Park, actually this past Saturday. Normally, their beer gardens are held inside the Windsor Pavilion, but it was all booked up. It was quite busy there this weekend. And the use of the space was approved by the commission. Obviously, the rugby club would have still had to go through the typical process with the police and the liquor and cannabis regulation branch to get proper approval. As it turns out, that beer garden did not take place. They had a scheduling change for their games that negated the need to have that, so I'm not sure if we'll see a future request or whether they'll be accommodated within Windsor Pavilion on a different date. There were three items that the commission had previously asked to be included on the agenda just for discussion purposes. There was no formal staff report. The first was an update from the Playground Subcommittee. That's a subcommittee that's been established to do some fundraising towards some playground rejuvenation. And really, the discussion was around next steps, identifying a project that they would like to move forward on, which would help them with their fundraising efforts. When they don't have a specific project identified, it's a little more difficult to approach people. The second item was implementation of the Carnarvon Park Master Plan. Again, some discussion around next steps, some inquiries as to what the commission might see from staff being brought forward as part of the budget presentation that is done for the commission in November. So we had some discussions around that, and essentially, we're following the implementation strategy that's in the Carnarvon Park Master Plan. So I think I believe the first recommendation is to do more work on the building, some additional public consultation, and get some design drawings done so that we'd be ready to go to tender if and when funding were to become available. And the third one was some discussion around the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Departmental Master Plan. Currently, I think it was brought forward with the idea of being completed in 2021, funding availability, dependent on funding availability. There was some discussion about a potential request to have that advanced, possibly to 2020, but there was no motion made or no change, really. There was just some discussion, and I'm not sure. We may hear more discussion at the budget presentation, but as of now, from a staff perspective, I think it's as is. Then there was a report. Council may recall that there was a request for the commission to meet with the Public Art Committee to flesh out some additional locating guidelines for public art, and along with that, I suppose, any other updates that may be required with that policy. It really, it was established, and we've lived it now for a few years, and it's probably a good time to do a complete review. And the commission asked for staff to work with the Public Art Committee to formulate a draft agenda and bring it back to the commission for some input with the idea of finding a meeting date sometime later in the fall, so that's in the works. Other than that, it was just the typical monthly reports that the commission sees on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herman. Do we have questions from the committee for Mr. Herman? Counselor Nate, and then Counselor Patterson, please.
Thank you through your chair. To Mr. Herman, thank you very much. You know, I've got my eye on the report out on the tree protection bylaw, and I really appreciate us getting those numbers on a regular basis. And I know if Chris Heidlay was here, he would tell us what I'm seeing here, but I'm just wondering if, in the interest of the public, if you could just help explain what these numbers are showing. And it's what we've heard before, and that is that on private property, we don't do nearly so well as on municipal property, but the numbers are quite significant, aren't they? They're, you know, for every four trees that are removed on private property, one is replaced, whereas on municipal property, we do much better. Whereby, for every one tree that's removed, we replace it with three. So I was wondering if you could just explain here that, are the numbers that are replaced on municipal property coming out of the losses, in response to losses on private property, or is there any interconnection with what's happening on municipal property they dealt with quite separately, if you follow my question?
Through the chair. Hopefully, I do. I'll see if I answer it well or not. You can let me know if I don't. Obviously, overall, they're connected, but we've been very lucky in the last few years in getting bequeathed funds and grants from B.C. Hydro on an annual basis to get trees in the ground, and so I think the numbers that you're seeing on municipal property are a function of that as much as anything. And certainly, council did provide additional funding as part of the implementation of that urban forest strategy to continue with this work and to bring on staff to do extra watering, because those trees, once they get in the ground, the first three years require a lot of care. So if we want them to be healthy and be around for a long time, that type of work needs to be done. But certainly, the biggest challenge we've got is on private property, absolutely. And I do know that Mr. Heidlay, hopefully, he may have some bit of announcement later, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but he's been working with the Community Association around some sort of initiative, educational initiative, and we do have a number of trees that were purchased, Gary Oak seedlings, that are available for us to either give away or make available to folks if they're willing to plant on private property. So there's some irons in the fire as far as trying to address those challenges on private property, but that is certainly where the challenge will lie, I think, probably for a number of years.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. We await the updates. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, to Mr. Herman. Couple of things from the reports that I have questions on. I noticed in the report you talked about the success with the inclusion team leader and support team for special needs enrollment and programs. I know when we looked at that program at estimates time, there was some difficulty getting the contractor to meet the expectations of what the contract was. So if you could perhaps elaborate on how this program was managed, was it through the same contractor, different resources, if we might just have a few words on that?
Thank you. Through the chair, yeah, we were part of a very longstanding regional contractual relationship and initiative with the other recreation departments in the region, as well as the Victoria Integration Society to establish Recreation, Integration, Victoria. But, you know, I think because the demands had grown for those services so much, I just, it seemed to us that they were very overwhelmed, and little by little, were advising us that some of the services that we would typically see were not going to be delivered anymore. And so for us, one of the key services was finding staff people to work with children who needed that support for summer camps. We had a lot of expressed demand for that type of service in the summers. So this was the first summer, actually, where we had been advised we weren't going to be seeing that service as part of our arrangement. So what we did is brought in some team leader, got some team leader hours, and that person worked with our staff. And a number of our staff have those skills and abilities through our ongoing childcare programs to work with those type of children that require that help, and, you know, everything from, I mean, physical disabilities and autism spectrum and all the rest of it. And what we found this year was not only were we able to service significantly more children than we ever had before, but with significantly fewer issues. And Mr. Meekel and I have had a couple of discussions as to why we think that happened. Certainly, he's closer to it. His feeling is that because our staff, our team leader knows the staff people, knows their skills and abilities, we're in a better position to link them up with children that, where it would be a good partnership, as opposed to just, here's the next person in line, and away you go. So they were able to address behavioral issues or, you know, sort of cut things off before they got to be a bigger issue, and I think in the whole summer, we had to ask one parent that their child wasn't able to behave and participate. But in a normal course of a summer over the last few years, we would have an issue, a fairly significant issue on a regular basis. This summer, that was the only one that came to my attention, so. I know Mr. Meekel was ecstatic with the way that worked. So really, we feel that was really the biggest, most important deliverable that came from our relationship with RIV. So, and their executive director has since retired. A couple of the other municipal partners have pulled away permanently from that arrangement, so I think we're prepared, given the success that we saw this summer, where we feel a little bit more comfortable that, you know, we were a little bit worried that we didn't want to negatively impact the service that our customers would see, but we're fairly comfortable now that we will not only provide as good, if not better, service than they've seen in the past by providing those services in-house. So that's hopefully a summary that works for you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman, and I'm really pleased that, and staff are to be commended for pulling that together, because I think it's a really important program, and so it was, you know, nice that you could utilize resources wisely to really make the summer right for all of the people that were enrolled in the program, so good for them. The other question I would, I have is around the tree bylaw. If we, because there are monies in the recommended changes to the tree bylaw to offset our arborist costs and perhaps boost our program a little bit for enhancing our urban forest canopy, I'm just wondering if we, if we have any idea yet on when we will see the final amended tree bylaw and put those things into action.
Thank you. Through the chair, that, there is work being done on that. I think Mr. Heidlay is probably on his third draft of that draft bylaw, and right now, I know he's got the draft out to some senior staff in other departments for one last round of reviews and feedback in preparation of bringing that before council. So I don't have a specific date in mind. Certainly, if we're able to get it forward in October, the sooner the better, but without specifically asking that question of Mr. Heidley, I don't want to pin him down to a date, but it's imminent.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Herman.
I have Counselor Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair. My Lord worship, what am I supposed to call you? I'm not quite sure. Three years of staff, with respect to the new bylaw. I recall there are some master plans coming forward, maybe with some dates. I was wondering if we could ask staff, and staff can choose who wants to answer, as to when those general plans will be coming forward that might have this bylaw update within it, please. I'll start there.
I'll take a crack at that. As far as the, through the chair, the tree protection bylaw, I think we were anticipating that coming forward on its own very quickly. The, I mean, there's a couple of plans where we're in the implementation phase now, the Carnarvon Park Master Plan, the urban forest strategy. I think as part of strategic planning, the full departmental master plan had been tentatively identified to take place in 2021. If there are other plans, those are the ones that I'm aware of.
I was wondering through you whether the CIO wanted to add anything to that?
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same master plan, so thank you.
And it's the same master plan that the CIO used, the phrase that was mentioned during priorities, that master plans. I think it was plural, if I remember correctly. So that was my first question. The second one has to do with, congratulations, more of a comment, congratulations to parks for the federal announcement of the National Historic Site in the Uplands area, fantastic news. And I guess we could also say thank you to Oak Bay Police for doing their job and keeping us on the map for good reasons. So I'll leave it at that on that one. I noticed in the minutes, next item, is the energy loop work is coming to an end. That's fantastic news, but with noting also that soon we'll be talking about changes to our committees and commissions and boards and those sorts of things, and some of us having concerns with maybe a sustainability committee or some sort of environmental committee, I'm kind of curious, what can we maybe point to as a next step beyond energy loop as like, where do we go from here? And does Parks and Rec want to say anything with respect to the next steps about energy loop?
Through the chair, I can advise that we've got a shelf-ready proposal to replace the solar panels on the roof of the Oak Bay Rec Center. They're old and in need of replacement, but also looking at expanding the number up there. The energy loop is turning out to be very successful. It's reducing gas usage, but it increases electricity usage. So that's a good trade-off, but if we can get the solar panel project done, that will help alleviate the electricity consumption issue that has arisen as well. So beyond that, I know we contract our energy manager, Mr. Wilson, who used to be a staff member, who's, you've seen his presentations, he's very enthused about this topic, and he's always looking and talking to staff about other options. I'm sure he's had discussions with public work staff and whomever he can bend someone's ear and come up with a new idea, so he probably has a few irons in the fire.
And if I may share with one more question, congratulations also for the aquatics schedule change. I know the Tuesday and Thursday adjustment to schedule did cause a few, let's just call it a kerfuffle, for lack of a better word, and many of us up here received tens, if not hundreds, of emails about it, some positive. And I can tell you that for me, as a parent with little kids, it would be quite, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I would quite often be turned away, wondering like, what the heck is going on? So I plan on being one of those users on Tuesdays and Thursdays, taking advantage of the schedule change, and I look forward to seeing some older folk there with me and my kids, since I know it's open to everyone, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zelka. I have Counselor Green.
Through you, Chair, to Ray and to Monte. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for the report, as always, always detailed and informative. And I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that the Uplands Park, the National Historic Site and Uplands was a really big event. I'm sorry, I was out of town for that event. I just wondered as follow-up, that was really a grassroots, community-driven project, as you recall. I believe it was the Honorable David Anderson, Larry McCann, I believe Rick Marshall from CAO was involved, Marion Cumming as well. I just wondered if this has already been done, so I'm just asking the question, would it be appropriate for the mayor to acknowledge those individuals by way of a letter, just to congratulate them on the hard work they put into that? The Heritage Commission, when I was a member and then Chair, supported that effort, and I know that they made, they did so much work to get that to where it finally came with success, so thank you for raising that, and also, so that's just my question, I believe the community really deserves applause for that huge effort to get that done. Thank you.
Maybe I could ask for a little bit of direction from the Director of Corporate Services, as how we might stick onto that into the next council meeting? Would that be need to be brought forward as a separate motion?
Through you, Chair. No, you know, we can action that. I don't think we need to make a resolution. I think we can just action that and make those recognitions as requested.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments, questions from members of the commission? Then I will ask whether any members of the public wish to comment. Please come forward. As usual, if you're, we'd like you to put your name and municipality of residence on the sign-in, please, so we can have your name correct for the records.
Good evening, Council. Through you, Chair. I'm just curious, I don't have the minutes of the Parks and Rec Commission, but I remember that I have a question about the last item.
Can I just get your name for the record?
My name is James Sultan. I'm South Oak Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Sultan.
So I would like to learn a little bit more about the last item. It refers to work, and I don't have the minutes here, so I don't know what the wording is. Work requested, or, and it's just one line. I'd like to know what kind of work that is, and the financial aspect and budget. I just would like clarification. I'm curious about it. Thank you.
Mr. Sultan, are you referring to the minutes of the Parks, Recreation, and Culture Commission?
Exactly.
We might possibly need a little bit more information on exactly what point you're referring to, so that we can ask Mr. Herman to respond, or, okay. Mr. Herman is indicating he's okay to respond, so please go ahead, Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe under the Director's Report, there was a verbal report that just updated the commission to say that staff are working on the budget process. For our department, we start in August, working on, starting work on capital. Actually, starting next week, we have 10 divisional meetings, aquatics, arena, parks, maintenance, where we start to put together not only our projections for year-end for 2019, but our provisional budget for 2020. That needs to be presented to the commission at the November meeting, so we don't have a lot of time. We have to start this early, and then that sits a little bit. We forward that information to Municipal Hall, but then we wait for the joint presentation of the final budget to commission and council in the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sultan. Are there any other members of the public wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I will seek a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Then I will call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Herman, for the fulsome update. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And we are moving on to item two on the agenda, which is regarding permissive tax exemptions from 2020 to 2023. This is an update from the Director of Corporate Services in place of the Acting Director of Financial Services, Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you, Chair. I will offer what I can. So these are longstanding permissive tax exemptions in Oak Bay that are up for renewal, so we are currently asking for council to allow us to give notice to the public that we would like to proceed with this and allow the public to provide feedback. These are for, the reason why we have to do this is despite them being municipally-owned properties, because they are not occupied by the municipality themselves, we still have to, the legislation requires us to undertake a process in order to exempt the properties from property taxes each year.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Do I have questions from the committee? I'll have Counselor Patterson and Counselor Zelka.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, to staff. Permissive tax exemptions are based on organizations providing value to the community, and I have no doubt that the organizations that were listed for this do provide significant value to the community. But what I would like to understand is if we request from those organizations a report from them of their assessment of the value of their contributions to the community that will go with any presentations we make to the public about why we are granting these permissive tax exemptions.
Not sure who's the best one to field that one. Ms. Hopkins?
I'm sorry, Chair. I don't have that information at my fingertips, but we could certainly have that information come back to you when this, if, should council give us direction. When the bylaws are considered for three readings, we could bring that information back, which is anticipated at September 30th.
Thank you.
I would be happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have Counselor Zelka.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you, to staff, I'm in favor of these particular permissive tax exemptions, and I just wanted to ask that, just to confirm, that I know that with respect to, on other areas, for example, heritage, the general topic of heritage designations, I understand that at some point in the heritage designation process, there's sometimes talk of compensation in that process, and I am speaking hypothetically. And I understand as one of the potential compensation mechanisms is potentially a tax exemption-type process as being one of the options available to council if they were going to impose a designation on a property. So I just wanted to confirm with staff that this particular, these particular four properties doesn't preclude doesn't preclude us from potentially doing further permissive tax exemptions? For example, in the case of a, of a heritage designation or some other, some other instance like that?
Ms. Rolle?
Through the chair. So, heritage designation and compensation that would be owing is distinct from this kind of permissive tax exemption, is my understanding. We can have the Director of Planning attend the next meeting to clarify, but off the top of my head, that's, that's what I have to offer Council tonight.
And that's fine for now, thank you. I'll, I'll be voting in favor.
Any other questions from the Commission or the Committee at this time? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And I'll call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? And that...
I'm adjourned.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Good job, Andrew. Oh, I should have.
Yeah, you know, when we do one, we always run out. Yeah, and if we do three, the only one that can speak, yeah.
Thanks for the comments on that.
Yes, we're so quick, but...
Oh, so I went through the hard copy, so I got the grade of the document, did you?
That's what I was sure, they all were made in the copy, they were highlighted, were...
Yeah, so Victoria's put them into, I believe, I didn't actually read all of them.
I'll have to look at that.
Whether it's already changed or not. I think she changed them and highlighted it.
Yeah, I saw a bunch of highlights, yeah.
That was my home in TV, I was...
It just feels right and the outside is parallel.
Yeah, I think, like, Tony and I talked about that a lot in interviews, that was like contentious or, you know, especially...